Afternoon, everyone. This is the monthly meeting of the Dayton Stormwater Committee. It's Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Calling the meeting to order at. What is wrong?
One fourteen.
One fourteen P. M. We're at the Old Town Hall Upper Meeting Room, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue, Dayton. This is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for internet posting on YouTube. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, one good body, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Aggy.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Smello.
Present.
Caldonia.
Yeah.
I want to introduce the newest attendee. And. And she's going to be here taking care of the minutes for us, Elizabeth Marrera. Uh, she's going to be with us until the end of June, uh, and she will be doing the minutes. So welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Um, she will draft the minutes and get them to me and, uh, Mr. Pillink. And if anyone finds anything in the minutes that go out, get back to me. All right, so that she's doesn't have to be going back making amendments and I have to look at them again. So, uh, so welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Pillink.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
With his cookies. Mr. Woods, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, which item would you like to take out of order first?
Uh, we'll start with, uh, Rujo, fourteen twenty William Street. They're trying to open the nursery next week, so he's got a lot to do.
Okay, so the motion should be to take agenda item forty out of order.
Of course.
There's a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Mr. Rujo. You'd like to come up to one of the tables so you're closer. Hey, anybody here wants a cookie, help yourself.
Hi, Terry.
Hey, Rujo.
Uh, pull up a chair.
Oh.
Okay. Hi, Carrie.
So, Mr. Rujo had a pile of dirt that was visible from the street and we had gotten some phone calls, so we went out and took a look at it and, uh, determined it to be within a hundred feet of the water body. And then we'll let Mr., we talked to Mr. Rujo and invited him here, and here he is, and he's got more information for us.
Yeah, um. I thought it was Lisa.
Um.
Microphone.
Yeah.
It's on the chair right there.
Oh, okay.
Carrie, can you hear him? Oh, so, okay. Can you hear me, Carrie?
Okay, all right.
He's here for a reason.
Uh, my name for the record is Kenneth Rujo, and one of the owners said, uh, fourteen twenty William Street of the A and M Realty Trust. Um, last Wednesday, I believe, it was, um, I'm agent and Porta Health agent came up and. It's going on, so I showed him what was going on. In regards that the, it showed up on the aerial map as a burn pool, which is not, it's man-made dug irrigation pond. Um, and the area in front of it was all silt and with field stone back in the fifties and the sixties. We cleaned it all up last summer because we're trying to irrigate it. Without, it's, I don't know, abundance of water and pond was all silted. And I started the progress with, uh, USDA at the Wareham office on the N. R. C. S. part of the division. And to come out with a conservation work plan. I contacted them, uh, actually, as soon as they left on Wednesday, I called. I had an appointment yesterday, we did an, had an appointment. And the only issue is, as far as to get the plan drawn out, it won't be until late May, early June. So, I mean, we just, we're not going to do any, we're going to take those piles of soil out. And then they're going to come out because they have to survey it because of dredging it where it's man-made versus a natural water body, there's different regulations of what, how much material can be taken out.
Yeah.
And seeing that's a man-made, but they have to come out and survey the, uh, square footage of the pond. Part of it, the westerly side where we were, was upland. The easterly side of that pond is in wetlands. And then we put up, I put up the woodchuck burn, so there was no silt going in and to contaminate the water. And hopefully, when we do dredge it, when they do fix water on William Street, it'll go into the swamp, hit the pond, hopefully the swamp will fill it out, and then it just travels down into the public squash swamp. Against the river, so there should be plenty of treatment. And I told them what the town is doing, what we, well, they already got the plan of what I have done. And all that together, so I don't know if you want. I'm sure I'll just give it to the Concom once I get the work plan from them and submit it.
Yeah, so the work is, appears to be less than thirty-five thousand square feet for the filling, so I don't think it required a stormwater permit, but it warranted investigation. So, yes, I believe all the work is going to be done for Conservation Commission.
Okay.
But obviously, they'll keep us in the loop.
Yeah, but as soon as I get any more information from them, I'll contact Lisa and just let her know what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, or you could have them contact me.
Yeah, I'll have it while, do you work with Sean?
I have Scott Repousse's office, yeah.
All right, Scott's going to, Scott was our, John, John did it yesterday. I normally deal with Scott, so I'll just have Scott contact you.
Yeah.
When, uh, he starts.
And we can do a site visit and stuff like that, that'd be good.
Okay.
But we can talk about that at the conservation meeting next month.
Next month, okay.
We didn't invite you to this one because we gave you ten days to respond, and you were very responsive.
Yeah, and as, as far as the other, the other, the other parcel there that's pertaining to Zero Main Street, that was before we cleaned the gravel pit up and NRCS came in and said, I didn't need a conservation plan for that. But like I said, they, one of the others was complaining about stuff being dumped on the side. That was from people in the subdivision who used that place for a dump.
No, we're sup. If someone will be sawing that.
Yeah. And like I say, after next week, if you want to come up, we'll do a walk, that's fine.
Yeah, that's not, I don't think necessarily stormwater issue, so that's, but yeah, whenever you're available.
Okay.
We can go. Take a quick.
Are you going to make the pond any bigger, Kenny?
That's going to depend on, for the, uh, NRCS, I don't believe it's going to be any bigger. I guess it has to do with the depth, the amount of soap that's in there, and they can't make that decision until they actually come up and do a site review of it.
Does it stay, do you have their water all summer, does, is it deep enough, the water will?
Yeah, you know, when, if, there is actually a spring in there.
Oh, okay, all right.
And part of the reason why we're starting to get a little bit of duckweed growing on it is because the area where the spring is, it's kind of silted in, so.
Uh, does anybody have any questions, uh, anything for Mr. Rujo? So, uh, Mrs. Caldonia is, uh, Mr. Rujo going to be talking to the Concom tomorrow night? Oh, next month?
Yeah, because we wrote the letter last week, and we give homeowners, property owners, ten days to respond. So I asked him to come to next month.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, all right, so we're all set. Uh, and you can keep us advised of whatever.
Of course. Yeah, but it will be after your next month's meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, because now he's got direction and, and, uh, uh, you're going to take the lead on it anyhow, so, uh, we've responded to whatever, whoever got calls or whatever the concerns were. Uh, so it's been addressed.
Yeah.
And.
It, it was, it was a visual observation, it wasn't a response to a resident who had concern.
Okay.
It was, we do inspections at Clearway and things, but when we drove by, we could actually see the path from William Street, and we knew there was a swamp in there or so. But we, we already have the authority to drive in the Clearway, so we looked over and we could see the path.
Okay, all right. I think we're all set. Yes, Mr. Uh.
I missed this.
Yeah.
I have to take a phone call. Um, were you notified that this was on the agenda today for this meeting?
Um, I called and they said it's on the committee, so I figured I, normally, I thought I, I was asked to come to both.
Yeah, when we met with him last time, is that we told him today, just give us a brief update.
Thank you.
Well said, okay, thanks for coming in. So when are you, when are you going to open?
Twenty-seventh.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, that's like.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item out of order.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we take Brooks Street Solar Project out of order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, she answers. And, uh. And the motion, uh, Elizabeth, the motion would be take agenda item five A out of order, okay? Hi, Nick, welcome.
Hello. For the record, Nick Fessendole, Level Design Group, here on behalf of the project developer, Press Hopper Solar. I've been in front of the committee for a few months now, so I wanted to come by and discuss recent activities at the site, I know there was some questions regarding inspection you guys did in late January and just kind of, um, go over the work that's been done there to remediate those basins from their initial state when they were constructed a few, uh, about a year and a half ago. Did submit a detailed letter, kind of going through the timeline from, say, October of last year to present day, the, uh, number of inspections that I've done, Todd's been out there plenty of times, and the work that the contractors have done, the additional work that they've done to remedy concerns that have been raised by myself and Todd over the, um, last few months with regards specifically to the basin rehab, removing all the unsuitable materials uh, that were discovered at the bottom of the basins and reconstructing the firms and doing some other minor work at the site.
So we received his out of the plan in these files, uh, but if you recall at our last stormwater meeting, we voted that we were going to send it out for third party to review. So we sent all this documentation out to both reviewers and one of the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Still waiting to get back from there. I, I think we only need one to review it, but we're getting the two prices, so we can go from there. There were some discrepancies out there, but he pointed most of them out in his letter. But basically, the bottom of the basins were a little lower than they were supposed to be, uh, the spillway was a little higher in one place or and the burn was a little lower in another place, so. It's, it's enough to have the third party look at it to determine if it is in compliance with the intent of the project or if any other modifications need to be made. I do have one question, do you know how deep the stone is in either of those basins? Because it seems like it's a lot more than just a few inches that they were.
I know, there was, uh, it was supposed to be six. It was in support of six initially, I think, that some additional stone was brought in, so I think some sections where it was lower, it was a little bit higher. Uh, I think they just kind of leveled that off. But I mean, as far as exact depths, I can't say for sure throughout the basin, but I'd say it probably varies anywhere from four to nine inches, um, throughout the bottom of the basins.
And I did go out and look at them yesterday, uh, during the rainstorm. And yes, they had water in them, but we all expected that. Um, I haven't been back yet to look to know if there's water in today, but I'm guessing there might be somebody in the room that might know if there's water in today. Um, so, um, but once we get these estimates back and we choose somebody, they're going to want to do a site walk and then we can get out there and get a look at it and, um, see what things are out.
Um, Mr. Perry, how much rain did we get?
I know, under, just under four inches.
Is that right, for the duration of this?
Yeah, I think we had, we had my house.
Um. How much water was in the basin when you were up there?
When I was up there, it was not to the spill. It wasn't hitting that concrete structure where it was over the top, it was still down. Whatever, four inches or so from the top, but I was out there at some point in the afternoon, so.
Third-party review, uh, going to cover the areas under the panels where this, for lack of a better term, there's like berms that go through there to direct stormwater?
Yeah, that's going to be, I'm just trying to find my letter now, but there were several things that they're looking into. Part of it was about the grass not growing anywhere on the site, uh, some washout from one of the berms, silt accumulation, the stone in the basins, uh, elevations of the berms. So there's, they're going to be looking at the site again to see if all things are in compliance and yeah, the berms, they may want them extended further or whatever, we don't know, you know, that's, they're looking at everything.
Oh, you know, there was things that we saw that we questioned, is all going to be part of this?
Yes, well, some of it ended up in my letter for the basin reconstruction that I believe you guys got a few weeks ago now, I don't know what, but, um, yeah, but everything's fair game, if they go out there and they see something else they don't think is right, they're going to point it out to us.
Okay. You were there on the site visit, do, Mr. Aggy, do you have comments, questions?
I, I have two comments, I concur with everything the stormwater agent said, uh, based on my, uh, walk through. The, uh, they're all concerning, the site not being vegetated is extremely concerning because we have other projects in town that are vegetated at a much factor place. So that really bothers me considering that how much time has passed and how many seasons we want for the project started. Um, I just want to clarify for the record, the third-party review has not come back, so we've not ordered that one yet, correct?
Right, we're still waiting for estimates to come back, yes.
Okay, all right, and we don't have a timeline on that?
I honestly thought we would have had it, but.
But Barbara responded at twelve something today and asked for the most recent, she has a two thousand and eighteen document. She's looking for the most recent.
Yeah, so I expected it to come back today, but apparently they're still trying to, I had asked, um, Fessendole for previous documents, we got those forwarded and moved off. And, um, so now I guess the one, if there's any other documents that they need to be looking at. I would expect it to be very soon that we get a price.
Yeah, we need to prepare.
And I have one more question, and this is related to battery storage, which obviously is part of this project. Um, I'm working with, um, uh, the developer now to move towards permitting for the battery storage. I'd like the record today to capture whether or not a stormwater permit is going to be required for the land clearing for the adjacent property. Have you, you've looked at the plan in terms of, made a determination as to why?
I did, at the last stormwater meeting, I said it wasn't, and I emailed the planning board and told them that it wasn't, so, right, Carrie, you got that? Yeah.
Okay. There still seems to be confusion on the developer's side, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, but multiple times we said it's only twenty thousand square feet or whatever, it's not even close.
Yeah, once it went from, clarified the.
Two hundred.
Radius.
Yeah.
You know, it took us out of that, out of that threshold.
Yeah, because it was two hundred feet to the property line, but it's only a hundred cleared. And the original plan showed two hundred feet cleared.
Correct, yes, and we, we adjusted that, so we do not need a stormwater.
Can we ask a question? Why wouldn't we just try to amend the existing stormwater permit to include that in lots?
Separate property.
Different owner.
Different owner.
Different property.
Yeah. We did leasing, and, and we don't, we're not.
I'm telling you.
At least, the panels are, but they bought the lot next door, right?
And we don't ask for amendments to permits or permits if they're not applicable, so if it's not applicable, it's not applicable. Right. Thank you.
So I'm just looking at the minutes, um, and I know these went out late, so you may not have had a chance to read them, these are the minutes, uh, January eighteenth. Um, the plan has been. The plan has been received for the proposed tree clearing to provide a one-hundred-foot buffer from the battery storage units to the woods. The proposed area to be cleared is less than thirty-five thousand square feet and does not require a stormwater permit. The Conservation Commission will be confirming the wetland delineation, so, um, does that?
Uh, we're not confirming, but, well, I did a site visit, but that's not yet, the application isn't for me to confirm, the wetland delineation application is specifically for us to review the additional work to see if it meets the performance standards of the Wetlands Protection Act in the bylaw.
So have they, have they, were they required to, to mark the wetland delineation on that piece of property in order to clear enough? So that's been done?
Yeah, so we can figure out the area of disturbance, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks, does anyone else have any questions, comments, or anything?
Thank you.
So, assuming someday, hopefully in the near future, the basins begin to work, I, they're going to recede everything because I've visited a site that's been cleared, there's nothing on it yet, it's just been cleared. There's grass, green, and everywhere, and what's up there is weeds don't even grow. So are they going to be able to sit underneath those panels, or what's the story there?
From what I'm told by the developer, the plan is to get out there and do the seeding work early spring, so within the next couple of weeks. Um, I don't know what the scope of the work is, I did say you probably have to get in there, possibly power rake a large portion of the site because there is branches, stick, and other things that would prevent, um, the seeds from germinating.
There's some rust too from the.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you're going to have channelized stormwater flow through that site because it's such a wide-open area, but you hope you, you have stabilization first and then that really doesn't become an issue. Um, but there is some growth there, they did seed it a while back, they did it at a poor time, it was right before the winter, so some plants have come through, but it's, it's not good enough, it's.
Is the developer that you're mentioning, the person, the company that did all the corrective measures on the basin, or is it someone else?
No, this is the, this is Grasshopper. Not the, I'm not speaking for the company.
Oh, you're talking about the company that owns this thing, okay.
Yes, correct, the actual project developer. And they're looking to get it seeded.
It's spring.
Spring, oh, yeah, and I've brought this up multiple times with them, and so they're, they're well aware of the concerns, um, you know, and the issues that having this site not stabilized brings upon the basins, because if you don't have the site stabilized, you're going to have issues with the basins long-term. You know, if sediment does go into there as they are infiltrating, infiltrating basins, so, um, we're doing our best to, to minimize that. So hopefully, uh, the work will begin shortly, I don't have an exact timeline, I was informed that would be early spring. Soon as the weather broke and it was appropriate to do that type of work, and when that work's done, you know, also notified the developer that it's not just a site, it's the rework berms, all the disturbed areas that were, uh, recently disturbed as part of this other work that was done to reconstruct these bases, so there's, there's been additional work in that, in the areas, not specifically under the panels, but say, in the back of the site where they had stockpiled materials and things of that nature, it's all kind of muddy. They did cover some areas with stone, provided access to the back basins, but the, the back slopes on all the basins, all the areas that were worked, all that needs to be tidied up and, um, seeded and stabilized as part of.
Do you, just for the record, do you know what the name of the company was that came out and did all of the, um, digging up and repairing and rebuilding?
Those contracting, I think they're out of Texas or Arizona.
Mexico.
New Mexico, yeah, somewhere, uh, not in the area, and they were working for Orbital as a, as a subcontractor. Um, you know, the development company who would hold all the initial permits.
Yeah. Okay, uh, more questions, please.
We have lots of questions, so, uh, based on what was just said, I'm asking my colleagues for some technical information because prior to allowing energizing of the solar, solar rack, um, I'm going to make sure that I work with the planning board to make sure we have appropriate bonds in place, you know, that this all happens. So if the vegetation does happen as was just described, and we have an ongoing review by a third party, how do you see that lining up? Uh, will we see if this thing will actually be vegetated or not? And if not, can we follow vegetation? Because I'm going to make sure that there's a bond in place with a timeline where that bond will be executed if vegetation doesn't happen and they meet all the other criteria in which allows me to energize the system.
So the way I see it, the basins are functional. That's one part of this. Having a bond in place for grass growing would make sense. However, I would also then ask for, if the vegetation doesn't stabilize and dirt gets into the basin, that we would need some kind of bond for removing of the stone and putting stone back if it continues to get silted up until the site is stabilized.
And topsoil. That's washed off over the past few years.
And now I did, uh, already tell Mr. Fessendole, he was, I was getting estimates for some, like the trees that need to be planted on the berms and that kind of stuff, because that would be part of the bond also.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, again, quoting from the minutes of January.
I know I've said this before.
Building Commissioner James Aggie has stated that he would require a tree planting bond if the trees that need to be planted in various areas were not planted prior to turning on the panels. So just, just a reminder that if we're going to do it for grass or vegetation, you're going to add the trees to it, because that was already discussed.
And, Carrie, would you like to comment on whether or not in fall, um, vegetation can occur if the spring one is unsuccessful?
I'm not sure what the question is was, but it really follows, it's going to satisfy the planning, the freezing one that's going to satisfy the planning board.
Trees and ground vegetation. We, we need ground vegetation about the runoff.
Yep.
Can that happen in the fall if the spring attempt is unsuccessful?
Yes, early fall. Springs are best for that, one at one time.
There is a bond in place.
There's a landscape bond.
It's a landscaping bond.
Including vegetating the site.
Right, right, because that was never discussed, all, any of our meetings, no. Bushes and stuff like that.
It happens, but it hasn't happened.
Right.
I think there's a problem with the soil composition, but we'll, we'll leave that for another day.
Right.
I don't think you're going to get that site vegetated.
But in order to grow grass, it has to be the right conditions, you know?
Yeah, I think the, I think the soils there are, are not consistent with growing grass.
It's funny that you mentioned that, because I was going to bring this up, because when I was out on that site walk, I looked at it and said, how can you grow grass in this hot pan?
Yeah.
Uh, but again, if they're going to hire somebody with whatever, a rake or whatever, it's going to be obvious if they're going to have to bring in topsoil.
Right, but for the record, if we go to bond room, we're going to get an outside vendor to go in, assess the site, and give us price to do whatever they think is necessary to make sure it gets vegetated.
I'll be honest, I don't ever recall, um, anyone ever talking about growing grass. Everybody was more worried about the bushes and.
You're right.
Yeah.
Normally, we don't worry about.
So I haven't had.
Right, right. Right, and I can understand why, but it was never a discussion, and we've had many discussions. All right, so, yeah.
You're right. I don't believe so, no. I know they originally were looking to get into, uh, the pollinator program that's administered by.
UMass Amorous.
They get an extra point oh-one cents per kilo lot, you know, for the state incentive, so they did have, that was the first batch of seeding that occurred really late, and I know part of that program is, you know, soil scientists from UMass visit the site and they develop their uh, very specific seed mix to, to vegetate that, to be, you know, to do all those steps, to be part of that program and to be certified. Um, I don't know, I'll have to confirm with the developer if that's still the plan or they're just going to utilize a more, uh, standard stabilization mix and forego that additional threat, because from what I've seen on these sites, the pollinator mix, it takes a few seasons to really fill in, and you have to seed it, and you have to seed it again, and you have to continually work at it, um, and have the right conditions, so. This may not be an appropriate site for that, so they may be changing course, unfortunately, I don't have that answer. Can coordinate with, with Ahmed and figure out what the final stabilization plan is, and I'll have him, uh, send an email to Todd with regards to where they're looking to go as far as the seeding goes. Um, I know that he said timeline, springtime to get out there and do this work, like I said, I've brought it up many times, it's very important, it's part, it's part of the stormwater system, you don't get the same runoff characteristics if the site's not stabilized, and we have the other concerns with, uh, erosion control, so, um, you know, it is something that, you know, I, I've brought up many times and they are aware of and, uh, hopefully will be handling in the spring.
I, I just have a general question, like, going forward, like, with new solar people coming, should we consider the grass?
So, if I may.
Good.
So I'm not a soil scientist, I'm a soil evaluator, but I can tell you that, just very basic terms, we'd have six other solar farms in town. None of them. None of them have had a problem with grass. In fact, without a problem with grass at bay while they were putting the panels on.
Right.
So there's something wrong with the site. Do I think it's a problem, widespread problem? No, I think it's an isolated isolated problem. However. They wanna consider it for the simple fact that it has such a significant impact on stormwater management.
Right.
Closing out a project. So it may be something.
Right, it gives the water somewhere to go. Gotcha.
And the fact, we now know there is at least one site in the town of Dyton where grass doesn't readily grow and weeds don't grow. I mean. When I see weeds growing in the cracks along the road, all right, I mean, they'll grow in the middle of the road. In the in the heat of winter, weeds will come up in the cracks. And to walk that site, having been at the one on William Street that's looks like it's ready to either mow or put the cattle out there to feed them. And to see that one so that the add an addition of uh. Grass comment of requirement, how I absolutely, because we, now that we've actually encountered the problem in town. Uh, yeah, it's gotta be something if we're gonna require bonds to ensure that something's gonna grow there to hold the soil. Yeah. Uh, interesting that um talking about what Mr. Aggie I said about other sites. We had a couple of solar farms, the highest point in the town of Dyton, Richmond Hill, and we all know it's rocks and led and. Whatever, but didn't run into the problem there. Just just it's unique, I guess, to that area. Does anyone else have anything else?
Mrs. Boiselle has nice grass.
Yes, if you would like to come up, Mrs. Boiselle.
Let's play six to eighty nine street. That's to the basin. Um, since they have done the work uh back in, I think they left in December. It had to have been pumped since then. Nothing else has been done since then. And suspecting that yesterday's rain is gonna have to be pumped again. Uh, it's quite full. The um, my concern is also when they. The land that was just purchased. When they cut the woods um to get that frontage. Where is that water gonna go?
So that water was already designed to come into the basin, like, because that hill just keeps on going up. So that water is all coming into the basin already.
It's gonna come into the basin. Now, the basin has a sock, like a process.
Oh, yeah, the uh across the top of it. Yeah, to keep silk from coming into the basin, yes.
Is that being there forever? Or does that get removed and then decide the basin is working?
It won't get removed until after the basin is working and grass is growing, but it may not even get removed. It may just decompose. I I don't remember what's inside of it. It might be mulch.
Mulch sock.
Yeah, so I think it'll just be like cut open and allowed to just to stay there.
But it would be cut open, allowed to stay there and then decide the basin is working?
No, they can't cut it until after we know the basin is working.
Oh, okay, but could that then interfere with more water coming down from the woods that are cut to the west? And the basin not work again because more water coming into it?
But that water was already designed to come into the basin because everything from the top of the hill is coming into that basin and that was accounted for. Was it your design or was it Atlantic's?
The sock isn't there to hold water back. It's there to filter it. Or gets to the fork gets to a certain point. So water travels through that green, we'll call it sock. And so it's not like a dam or anything like that. It does slow it down, but that that's the whole point of it. So. Any of like the small dirt and sediment particles don't get into the bottom of pond and and clog it up.
Will it go into the swale as well?
Some of it, yeah, from the north part will go into the swale, but the clearing is just tree cutting and and. Basic vegetation management. We're not gonna pull the stumps or expose soil through that area.
There's also a ditch. And so the water's gonna come off that cleared land because there's a drainage ditch that's already there.
And isn't vegetation gonna grow back after you cut the trees, but it won't reach the height that it's a, you know, I mean, we're still gonna have vegetation on.
Yeah, it'll be maintained for the fiber buffer. It's part of the most hardwoods for the planning board.
Is there any reason why trees wouldn't be planted on the dead trees, the trees that died? Um, the north side, probably it wouldn't be done in the spring.
Those are gonna have to be done before they get there uh allowed to tighten, correct?
Well, that was the part of the bond.
Or a bond.
Or a bond. To answer your question, is there any reason why not? No, and we're gonna make sure that they are fully aware. That when it was planning cycle starts, everything that's planning is gonna be done.
And and again, it's not just the dead trees that, and there are many on the north side. Um, and the ones on the burn, which were all taken off, but also the reforestation that's supposed to be done, the twenty five feet into the woods. Is also. Out of that, that nobody seems to address. I mean, I know you're addressing it and putting it into a bond, but. And I believe, Ms. Aggie, I said that you're gonna get someone professional up there to um.
If it gets to that, which I presume it will, yes, yes, it'll be someone not related with the firm, not related with Dyton. Just a vendor, third party vendor to come in and assess it and give us a price.
Because it's very important to uh very expensive to plant trees, never mind the cost of the tree. It's important, uh, it's expensive to plant it.
Can you just explain, are you talking about reforestation when this whole project is done or talking about?
There's a from, alright, so. Yeah, it it's from the original thing and it's still on there because I make sure every time something gets changed. Um, that, so you know where the trees were planted on the north side?
Yeah.
Twenty five feet north. Towards our property. They're supposed to put replanting in there to reinforce that.
I think they call it supplemental plantings.
It was, there is.
The trees are there already, but it was adding some.
Yeah, they were.
That was part of the bond where it would, that's why you took the bonds to figure out if there's a direct line of sight. Your property that you need to fill in a hole and need to put, you know, a couple extra evergreen trees to fill in those.
Oh, no, no, no. This is all, this was twenty five feet all north, all east. And it's on the plans.
North and east, not north and west.
This is why I'm saying, yeah, so there's various areas, because there's not just one place to treat, there's several areas.
It's not just, it it's planting throughout the that forest, that woodland. That is supposed to be helping to block.
Back for them.
Block the uh vision.
I don't have the original plans.
So I I think we can address this through the planning board. I I actually plan to engage the planning board in another month.
Okay.
Put put this on the agenda.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to come in. I wanna make sure that we have the appropriate bonds in place. If we don't, then we're gonna make sure we do. Um, but we're a little bit early. We need to get, we need to get another four or five weeks out before I can start that discussion. But I assure you, it's it's on the list and there won't be any interconnection, any interaction until that gets sorted out.
Okay, only because, um, I mean, I know it's early, but it's two years late as well. So. And that's it. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, shouldn't this bond be directed towards stormwater rather than planning? Because planning already has a bond for landscaping in their findings and decisions.
I don't have the answer. That would probably be for an attorney. However, I will tell you that I think there's two bonds. There's the landscaping bond. That makes the project compliant with the special permit that you issued, the planning board issued. And then the vegetation of the site, which relates to the stormwater infrastructure, would be a separate law.
Through stormwater or through the planning?
That's the question for the attorney. I don't know.
Right, right, because, you know, we already do have a decision in bond with them.
Yeah, I I I don't have the definitive answer, but I'm leaning towards it would be stormwater because it's best, it's a. Uh, what we're asking about is specific to uh stormwater controls. Um. Somebody's gonna, the town of Dyton will have a bond. Let me put it that way. That will take care of the tree plantings and the grass and whatever. Will, will.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Um. Obviously, also, there are other bonds involved because uh we have the basin uh bonds when we get basins that work. And um then we have, well, you have decommissioning. Um, so um. I would say this is gonna be another bond for a specific purpose. Uh, and. One way or another, we're gonna have grass growing and trees planted and whatever. Uh, and not at our expense. It's gonna get done one way or another. I have a question and I'm not sure, Nick, if this is something you can answer or not. I'm going back to the minutes of the January meeting. Um. So this is the section that says, we're talking about the land that was acquired to the west for the uh. To create the uh open space area to keep the batteries away from the woodland. Um. The cleared area will provide a buffer from the battery storage units to the edge of the woods. Yes, then there's a comment that says, no plan has yet been received for the proposed tree topping to the south, the panels. Now, a request was made, I grasshopper, to trim trees on the south area because depending on the pitch of the sun. There are trees high enough that shade the panels. So they wanted permission to top the trees. So Mr. Ferry got involved. Has anybody contacted you since we? We talked about it and Mrs. Caldonia got involved from a conservation standpoint and we said. Uh, I think it was conservation said, we need a plan. How much do they wanna cut? Because they're not clear cutting. They wanna top some trees. To prevent, to remove the shade thing. So where's the plan? Does it, as I say, it may not be yours, but at least you can ask about it because. That that was an issue that came up out of the blue. As a matter, I think I had the conversation with uh. Asta Hafiz about it. And I said, well, I've gotta get um the tree warden involved. And I spoke to Mrs. Caldonia and that's, she says, well, I need to know more than that. And then it got to be, we need some kind of a plan about. How much they wanna cut and how far down they wanna cut because they're not taking the trees down. So if you could just mention that to somebody. Uh, if their plan still is to uh pursue the request to reduce some of the shade area. Uh, we're looking for some kind of a plan to indicate how much and how far down, whatever it is. I think in the meantime, uh. That was probably around the time when the issue came up again about you gotta dig up the basins. And there was the to do about the other companies saying, we're not doing it. So I think it may have gotten lost in translation, but we got it in the minutes here. So we have to ask the question, Mr. Aggie.
So I am gonna throw out a little jab, okay? Based on my experience with this developer, that will become a priority once the panel stop making follow. Right now, I don't care about that.
While we started conservation, I think we have a plan that shows the general area, but. You call out the square footage or?
So, so for the record, we are on with conservation tomorrow night to amend the.
Enough, you mean tomorrow night?
Of conditions for the property. We request an extension because it expires next week.
Okay, all right, so this trimming is.
But um, so as part of the amended order, it that uh request includes. The work to install the culvert within the um drainage channel in the back. And that small section of gravel driveway that's gonna provide access to the area to be cleared on the uh property to the west. And as part of that application, uh put in an area. Within the hundred foot buffer zone outside of the twenty five foot no disturb zone and. Detail that area for. Clearing. In the future and that the developer's agent would need to coordinate with conservation with a specific plan. Regarding which trees are gonna be cut and how much of the trees are gonna be cut and that would have to be approved by.
Okay, so that's going back to trimming.
Yep.
Okay.
So I don't have, I asked for trees to be tagged and an arborist to provide a report and see that and. Easy to make our filing. So I put the general area, so conservation commission was aware that additional tree. Trimming was gonna occur in this zone and the best I could do was request that they approve that language.
Oh, yeah.
With conditions stating that none of this could happen until at least. That's the best I could do without having the exact trees they'll tag at that point, so.
So what, what point is Mr. Perry gonna get? It says the tree warden.
Um, I'm not sure of the procedural practices of the tree warden becoming involved on a private site. Uh, just, I know it's a conservation issue because we're in the hundred foot buffer zone. To the bordering vegetative woodland, but I'd be more than happy to coordinate with Mr. Ferry.
He is the tree warden, so um.
And I. When we know which trees we're gonna, when I am made aware of which trees are.
Well, you start cutting trees. You should speak to Mr. Ferry. Let me put it that way. Um, the reason I brought it up again is because I remember see here in the minutes, so, and I wasn't sure if that was your turf or if it was. Um, somebody else is gonna get involved, but.
And I showed it on the plan and the request to conservation just because that area is gonna be maintained. In the future and there'll be need additional trimming or requests need to be made. So I, my general thought was by having a blanket condition that said, when you wanna do any trimming in this area. You need to tag the tree, make an appointment with conservation or the tree warden. If that's how the condition is worded by the conservation commission. And then they work it out, say, okay, this is how much we need to trim and then. Those parties who are more knowledgeable in in trees, that's not my specialty, um, decide to allow that or not to allow it. I think that's the best we we could do at this, okay?
All right, anything else for Mr. Bassandole? Yes.
I just wanted to um respond to Mr. Boiselle. He said that no work's been done since December out there. So we have sent them a letter and said, don't do any more work until we get the ASGO and we know what needs to be corrected. Because we said, hey, the top looks a little low. I didn't want them just going in and raising the top that it didn't need to be. So they are on hold until we know what needs to be done.
Right, I know, I know.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Reason the same map was to say nothing's fixed. I mean, nothing's working. It wasn't working before that and it's not working now.
So again, uh, just for the record, I mean, I've been out to the site twice. This calendar year after rain events. It hasn't been a four inch rain event. That's a very extreme rainfall event, but. Todd's also been out to the site after, you know, quarter inch, three quarter, uh, you know, under half inch rainfall events. And the basins have been performing. I mean, I detailed that in my letter. So the basins are draining. For regular, I mean, relatively quickly. I mean, um, as far as the last time we were out there, it rained almost. What, four point three inches?
Yeah, it's almost.
And we were out there five hours after the rain stopped and if there was very little to no water in the bottom of those basins. Your standard storm event basins performed as designed. Four inches of rain is going to take some time to bring to the winter conditions. So. I'd like to commission to keep that in mind when if you do go out to the site today and you see water in the basin. That was a very extreme intense rainfall that that we had yesterday in the winter, so.
The design was always within seventy two hours of the end of the rain event.
Correct.
And right, we're still within twenty four hours.
We're still within.
A hundred year, but yeah. So again, that's why, like, I was up there yesterday to see it. I'll go out tomorrow and check on, see where it's at to make sure it is on the way down. Again, we're not signing off on anything yet.
You have done the sale, all little gunshots. But I'm just, I just have to provide my observations.
Yeah.
And like trying to get out to the site.
Gotta, you gotta admit, today is better than the time you were on the Zoom and we had another discussion.
Appreciate you guys' time. We appreciate the bossa lays working with us. I know it's not the ideal situation and, um, you know, I am advocating. Governor, we do these things and we're trying to get there and I think, you know, respect that the town is, was working with them and. Hoping to get all this wrapped up so they can energize and the site can be used because right now it's just sitting there. That's not good for anybody, so we're all doing our best to. Get this projector to the finish line.
So in the interest of keeping it moving, would it be appropriate, would it be okay if there was a motion that when we get the bids in, instead of forming another? Meeting that we allow the chairman to choose one of the people to do the. To do the review, would that be acceptable? I don't want to make the motion if people aren't going to be.
My position would be if it's someone that is known to the town that we've used before. If it's a brand, two brand new companies, I don't see that happening.
These are the companies that reviewed it for planning board when they approved it and for conservation when they approved it. That's why those two are the two selected for the bids at this point.
Actually, what I would suggest is somebody from Stormwater, somebody from ConCon and maybe a third party. That way we don't run into quorum problems, but by the same token, there would be the representation of people that probably know more about this than I would. Quite frankly. I'll be one of them, but I'll, I don't think.
I just don't want to form another meeting to then vote.
I don't want to hold stuff up, but at least somebody knowledgeable.
Do you want ConCon to do that? Are you coming to the meeting? Can you remember to add that to the end of the?
I can ask about it if they want to do it.
Well, honestly, if two bits come in. Uh, I mean, it doesn't matter which one, I'm still walking around and go Nancy, which one you want? Well, let's take the low one. Jim, which one do you want? The low one? Which one do you want? It's usually going to be the low one. Unless somebody says it's going to take me three months to get to it and the other one can do it in a week. But.
Standing the chair's concerns, maybe it's just as simple as reaching out to the individual members, get their opinion and then report to the chair and then. She can just execute. Does that make sense?
What? And you know what? To avoid the, the appearance of a meeting. We can have Elizabeth send out an email. With the basic information and anybody that wants to come in and look at this, if they want to look at it, they can. If not. Pick one and send it back to her and then she can just let us know. The ABC company was selected by the number of people.
Now, right. I mean, Gordon Conservation, you do these fifty three Gs all the time. Does an applicant have to weigh in on who they want? Is it their choice too?
No, but I mean, we care, but we, they don't have the final say. That was going to be my question. Is there an existing account for? Reviews and consulting that's open for this project with the town? What would that need to be? Go to, you have to, no sign on it. Get a check. And have that in place, whatever deposit. Before any of this actually occurs. It seems like this, this is going to be a few weeks out to. You know, get everything together, get your bids, you need to coordinate with the developer. I don't think anybody's going to start working until they have a check, which is fair. But yeah, I think that will.
Do they have an open fifty three G account with either of you at the moment? Yes.
It's business project specific.
Well, it's still the same, oh, it's the same project.
Oh, for this project, no, we don't.
Planning board does. But Stormwater, so if we're taking the lead on this, we would need to create that account.
We'll deal with the treasure on that.
But that's why I want, I don't want to wait three more weeks to four weeks to have another meeting here to then vote to then.
When do we think somebody, two people are going to send us something that says, I'll do it for this amount?
By the end of this week, we're going to have something.
All right. Okay, so when that information comes in, if you could work with Elizabeth to help her formulate that email. So that the responses come back to her. And then she can let us know that the majority of people picked whatever it is. That way we won't be.
So would the vote then be to authorize the chairman to execute the contract when it comes in after input from the committee members?
We can do that.
I just, yeah, I want to make sure we can move it forward. So. I don't know if that's appropriate. I'm not, I, I, this is a motion I've made before, so.
What I would say is the motion should state that the contract will be executed on behalf of the town by the appropriate person. Because where we haven't done this before, I want to talk to Mike Mullin. And just say to him, Mike, we're setting up a fifty three G to have this review done. The contract has to be issued. The contract law is very specific as one solo developer found out when they lost a court case in favor of. And the town won. That's why I'm hesitant about issuing a contract, but. If you weren't the way I just said, it would be, it will be executed on behalf of the town by the appropriate person. If Mike says, yeah, go ahead, and if it's not, I'll say to Mike. You sign it? If he says, okay, on behalf of whatever, I just want to, like I say, contract law, having sat through that. Whatever it was, trial or whatever. I can still hear the judge and I don't want down the road anyone to say you had no authority to execute that, so. But we can move ahead. This isn't going to hold anything up. All right.
Do you get that nomenclature from the chair?
No.
Uh, Todd, you want to start out the way you were when you started saying it? You moved that.
And, yeah. That. We authorize. The appropriate person to. Authorize, but not authorize, sign the contract or is it signed? It's not signed, so.
I'll move, I'll move that we authorize the appropriate town official to enter into contract for third party review for stormwater related. If, if stormwater related engineering. Review for Brook Street Solar.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Elizabeth, did you get all that?
She text three hundred words a minute.
So as far as the process goes, Elizabeth, if you just. Talk to Todd so that. The information goes out to everybody and they respond to you accordingly. And we don't violate any kind of meeting laws or anything. Do we have anything else on Brook Street Solar or?
So just, Todd, the consultant, you guys need any other information, just email me. I'll be sure to get you guys whatever you need, record plans, anything of that nature. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm making motion, we take six twenty Spring Street out of order.
Uh, let's see, where's that one? Five D.
I don't think you got much to say, but I figured since you're here.
So the motion is to take agenda item five D out of order. Is there a second? You have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, Mr. Perry, I'm feeling you're on.
Oh, I figured since this thousand dollars here, you might have an update for us because that's why it's here. Nothing started that we know.
No, we reached out to the, to our client, developer, and they. Have not provided us any information on when they're going to be moving forward, fortunately. It was that they were looking to get going right away. I know they had conversations with the building official. A few months back, but I don't know what's transpired to date.
There have been rumors, and this is all the rumors, that they might be selling the property and not moving ahead. Um, has anyone heard anything that might sound like, okay, all right? Okay.
They have been dealing with some sprinkler issues, broken pipes, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if they're just inundated dealing with that. I know they've been working with the fire department. Almost weekly on those repairs, so.
In the pockets of the building that's occupied? Where they have businesses? Oh, unoccupied, oh, okay.
They're way behind in their sewer bill. And we haven't heard from them. Nobody seems to know what's going on over there.
Okay.
Nick doesn't have answers to all those questions.
I'll do my best to reach out to those guys and.
Okay.
Circle up with.
All I'll say is, don't go any further with that because. There's a client, there is actually a quorum of the sewer commissioners here. So don't go any further with that. We all sat with the Mr. Fast and Dole, so, so no new information on.
Wish I had more information. Right.
Have a good day.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
See you tomorrow.
The gentleman in the back, does he represent? No? Are you here for any particular? Are you just here for the meeting in general?
He was here for the pizza.
Oh, well, have a cookie. Those cookies are good.
I like crunchy cookies, but it was pretty good.
Oh, I liked it because it's soft and lemony. All right. Getting back to the agenda and we got less than an hour to keep everything done. Foray. Review discussed fiscal twenty four budget meeting date. Mr. Ferry, what's the meeting date for Stormwater? All right, so March twenty eighth. Uh, and we're meeting at the prime time building, I believe. All right, so March twenty eighth is the Stormwater. Budget.
I'm away that week. So you know.
We'll expect you to zoom in. March twenty eighth. Uh, anything else on that? So March twenty eighth will be the. Meetings and it must show up. Um, for the professional services for Stormwater program. Um, actually received a. Email this morning. Mike forwarded it to me. And I haven't really had a chance to look at the proposal, but I'll just tell you the points that are in the email. The only one that has responded so far. Uh, is, um, Jere Swartz for Weston and Sampson. And what I told you at the last meeting was that. Uh, Mr. Mullin, Mr. Ferry and I. Had a phone conversation with a representative from Weston and Sampson, lady. And also we had another one with Buss and O'Neil. And we requested that they take a look at our notice of intent and our MS fours. And look at where the EPA with, is as far as. Areas that they're zoning in on for enforcement across the state because everyone's at different levels. So, and the other thing we wanted was, we feel it's time that we need to get professional. Assistance with things like testing and all that good stuff, which, which we, we haven't done. Uh, dry water or wet water sampling. And we've done a lot of work, I'll call it, around those kinds of issues because there are other things that we can do. Because there's money involved with these, so. We requested. What we need to look at. If we can do it this year, how much money are we looking at? If we can't, say this year, I mean this budget year before June thirtieth. If we can't do it before then, whether it's because of money or time. This would move to the. Uh, next fiscal year. Um, and give us roughly a five year plan of where we should, what we should try to do each year. To continue to move ahead to meet the requirements. We're in the fifth year of the notice of intent. I saw an email from Newton Tetter. They're talking about the next permit year and it's, it's like. We're in the fifth year and we're talking at the end of ten years. Um, but in any case, I'm just going to read this to you from. Ms. Schwartz. Hi, Mike. Attached, please find our proposal for MS four services. Which includes three items that we feel would be most beneficial for the town to prioritize. These include. Development of an MS four inflammation plan to guide the town in fulfilling the permit requirements. Through an assessment of needs, responsible parties and costs. Review the town's existing stormwater regulatory mechanisms for compliance with the permit. EPA has followed up with MS four communities. To check on the status of the required regulatory updates. Dry weather outfall slash interconnection screening and sampling. EPA has followed up with MS four communities to check on the status of their dry weather outfall. Interconnection screening and sampling if it was. Designated as incomplete in the community's annual MS four reports to EPA. In addition to our proposal, I am also attaching a copy of the town's urbanized area map. Which I know we discussed at our meeting in January. The map provides an overview. Of the MS four regulated area based on two thousand and two thousand and ten census data. Please let me know if I should be addressing and directing the attached proposal to Nancy. Happy to have a call at any time to discuss the attached proposal in more detail. Thanks for your patience. I apologize for the delay. So. I haven't really had a chance to look at the proposal and neither did Mike when he gave it to me. I did forward this email to Mr. Ferry and I'm going to forward this to every member of the committee with the proposal attached. Just so you know what came in. Um, because we're going to be discussing this further and. There's a potential. A good potential. There will be money budgeted in. Uh, FY twenty four to start to do some of this work. If there's any chance there's money in FY twenty three and there's time. We might be able to do, I don't know, one thing or something, but again, since this is fresh. This morning. Uh, we'll be talking about it at the next meeting and Mr. Mullin is going to include it in the initial. Discussions of. Budget for FY twenty four. I will tell you. That the estimated cost. For the three items. MS four implemented, implementation plan sixty four hundred dollars. Stormwater regulations review nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Dry weather outfall slash interconnection mapping, screening and sampling. Twenty five thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, as I said, we've worked around this literally for years because we knew. Especially the sampling, the kind of money it costs, uh, because it's not something we can do in-house. But anyhow. Um, before I call on you, Mr. Egg, yeah, Mr. Ferry, you're the only one I sent it to. Do you have any comments on just the email or anything?
So, as I said before. How Stormwater, how we respond, I definitely respond. On reporting the mapping with that, is where we meet the water bodies. And they sent up a map with it. It's pretty accurate. I questioned a couple of locations in that town where the radius is that where is. That's where the MS four takes effect. So it's not the whole town. General, so our response, like the spring cleanup, could be looked at differently and the money. Also, the three tasks that you broke it down, as you just read, they total forty one thousand eight hundred. That's if we did those three tasks all at once. We could entertain doing it in steps. And I, I. I know this could be looked at. Grants also, but even if we budget the money, still secure that grant. The money can still be town money. And I, I don't think it'd be hard to get support. This could be looked at. Very, very similar to like the payment management. Now you have the science behind it rather than. Us can be satisfied with regulation.
Right, and I should explain, when I said Mike's going to be talking about this relative to budget. There's a good chance that he will try to get approval to use opera funds that we have available. But I think also, when you all see this. There's a chance we may be. May be able to do one and two. Before the end of June, I don't know, but Mr. Egg, yeah, your comments.
So, yes, I know I'm not in the seat of the email, but. I'm looking at these three expenditures and correct me if I'm wrong, MS four part of it, that would be an operating expense. That would be an annual expense, correct?
No, I think. No, I think it's going to be, take a look at what we're doing, take a look at what we've done. Advise us as we move forward. So it'll help us with the one we got to do. This coming September for the year that ends June thirtieth. Okay?
So that's just looking at historic submissions to make sure that we're on track.
And probably looking, oh, I should tell you this. I got. I got the minutes from the statewide Stormwater meeting that was held in February. And most of the presentation was from Newton Tetter. And he was throwing out statistics about communities not in compliance with this and communities not doing that. And communities that he's contacted that haven't responded. So I'm saying to myself, well, he hasn't contacted us, so. We're not in the list that didn't respond. And he talked about cracking down on some of these. I guess I violate this. I did write back to him specifically and said. I'm reading those minutes. I wasn't at the meeting because it conflicted with another meeting I had. But my question to Newton Tetter was, basically. You know what we filed, you know where we are. I've never heard back from you since we got the initial approval. Uh, which was the notice of intent. Never had an MS four question. So my question is, in reading. Your presentation at that meeting. Where's Dyton in all of this? Are you going to say, well, Dyton, you need to do this, this and this? Or you're going to surprise me and say, hey, Dyton, you're in trouble? Because if that's the case. we're going to have a discussion because I've never heard. And obviously, if I get an email from EPA, there would be a response because I'm not going to poo-poo them. So that information, when I get an answer from him, I will share with everybody also. So we all have an idea what EPA is saying. But so to get back to your question now.
It sounds to me like if that's the case, then this is one-time expenditures. We should be looking at alternative funding sources for this.
Yeah, well, Mike is again, opera funds. No, when I say, when I say budget, I should have used the word funding for it because he did tell me that. And and obviously, the rest of what we asked. By the way, this is this, this what we're asking for, we're not paying for this. This. Obviously, if we get into the nitty-gritty, we're going to be paying somebody to do this kind of stuff. The rest of the conversation, Mr. Ferry, you'll remember this was, okay, tell us what we should look at immediately, meaning within the next fiscal year or so, whether it's this year or twenty fourth. But also, since we know these are the three top things that they've come up with as a priority, then the next question was, and going forward, we would like something spread out over the next five years to give us direction. This five, well, maybe four years left in the notice of intent. In the meantime, we're going to have to come up with a new notice of intent. But I think this is what they proposed because when we work through all of this, other than the testing, which we have not done, by looking at the, doing the first two, they can develop that five-year plan and give us a rough guess of what kind of money we're talking about over that spread. And and right now, this is based on what we know, what we are required to be looking for. Now, there were some communities that when they filed the MS four, all the boxes are checked for all of the kind of things that are listed there. The only box that I checked is bacteria and pathogens, all right, which is basically septic waste. But other communities, phosphorus, this nitrogen and this, and every year when Mr. Ferry and I sit down to do this, we look at what we've got in front of us. It's like, we have to do it yet? No, we don't have to do it yet. Everything is based on what we know right now and where we are. So it's going to change over the years, but go ahead.
One more question.
Yeah.
Do we know if the mapping portion of this is going to give us the data we need to create another layer on our GIS if we want to?
Without speaking of much, assuming that's to create the layer, I guess.
Okay. Because that would be important.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, in talking about mapping and I just mentioned this, I mentioned it before. I sat through a presentation here of NEAMAP, which is the software that the assessors office acquired to look at properties. And so I said, I want a demonstration of finding basins. And so Chief Cronin was also sitting in on Zoom. And we went to Sunny's Way because I know where there were two, the ones we looked at when we were up at Wellington Acres. And it was that NEAMAP software does a really good job zeroing in on finding the basins. And it was, it was very clear. And again, it was just a demonstration and we knew exactly what we were looking for. At least I did. Others in the room didn't, but I knew where they were, so we kind of went down the road and whatever. But that's, that's an interesting tool that I think others are going to find useful other than the assessment.
That you might know. Do you know how often they update those?
No, if you check with Stephanie.
You can go back on NEAMAP and look like a year back. I think it goes back maybe three years, right?
It goes back quite a ways.
Yeah.
Oh, it is current. And I think when we were talking about acquiring it, and I think in this year's, in the proposed budget for next year, there is the kind of fees you pay to have things updated, but but Mrs. Scheck can tell you that because she was looking at it for the budget. Okay, but you're right. You can go back and forward.
I couldn't, I didn't know if there was a way to get some information on that training.
Yeah, the, it was only a demo we had. And obviously, it was, the first part was a use by the assessors. You know, when somebody says, I don't have a swimming pool anymore, you can go back and find out, did you have one? When was it taken down or or all the ones that they kind of slipped in and they didn't bother getting the permit off? So, but anyhow, that was, that was that. So basically, on this agenda item, I will get this out to you. The email with the attachment so you can see the detail and we'll all understand what has been submitted. It will be coming up during budget discussion, but not raising appropriate funding. All right, we're looking at, as he said, possibly opera funding. So, but from what I can see, and again, I'm waiting to hear from Newton Tetter. I'm hoping I'm not going to get bad news. I'm going to get something that's going to give us direction. So and I'll keep you in the loop on that when I get an answer. Do they most have anything on this, not with just me one? So this will be on the agenda for next meeting because by then we will have had a budget meeting. You will have a chance to look at this and have questions about whatever. Even questions like, why do we have to do it? Or do we really have to do it? So we'll have some answers then. Agenda item four C, Will Street Repairs, anything there, Mr. Ferry? Agenda item five B, Clearway, Arujio Farms. Mr. Pilling?
So wait, do we have to go in front of the Conservation Commission tomorrow night? And they went in front of a plane boat last week? Yes?
They already went before us.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
So I'm in the order?
Yeah.
Do they come in before us tonight?
Tonight?
Yeah.
To accept the plan into the file, so if they accept it tonight, then that means tomorrow they can start up again. They have to do all those touch-up things like fixing the erosion control and putting in the rubble dam and that kind of stuff, but they'll be able to start.
Actually, begin the construction process? Okay, anything else on Clearway? This will be on the agenda for next month. Mrs. Ferrer, if you notice active project updates. Quite often, every month these appear. And sometimes it's just like Mr. Ferry said, nothing new, but we have to at least put it and say, has anybody heard anything about? Because once in a while, eventually there will be updates, but these are like reminders. Agenda item five C, tracking Stormwater Site Visits. We had talked about this before and with Mrs. Grassley's departure, I had asked that people just make a note on your calendar because these are important because I will be asking for this information for the MS four because I think as a committee and as individuals, there's a lot more work done than we actually take credit for that we can put on the MS four showing the site visits and the amount of oversight there is. For example, we heard from Mr. Arujio that there had been a visit from Mrs. Caldonia and Mr. Pilling. Mr. Pilling and I went to that site also. And if anyone else had been there or whatever, just keep it, make a note on your calendar wherever it is so that when it's time, I can collect all this data and we'll have it. We were going to set up a formal process. But until we get everything worked out with support as far as administrative support, it's best if you hang on to that yourself, but the main thing is to track, track it. Agenda item five D, Hatch Street Drainage, Mr. Ferry?
So that is moving along, that you didn't get no conservation agent notified yet, right?
Hatch Street.
I believe, believe that this coming month, they should be notified. That should be ready to move along. That's, that's not a big rush anyways, because that's probably going to be, the actual job would be a dry weather event anyways.
Okay. Agenda item five B, everyone knows we had to move the site visit. Tremont Middle Street Solar Projects to tomorrow morning at eleven. So we'll plan to meet at the what'd you say?
It's eleven.
At eleven, yep. Nine oh three Tremont Street outside, there's a big barn there and there's plenty of parking. So that's going to be the pre-construction meeting. And if you've never attended one of these, this is a very interesting and important meeting because you'll hear more details. We've walked that site once before, but for new members of the committee or anyone that might have questions, this is, this is really important. But you'll hear the discussion that goes on from the various departments involved like building and CONCOM and everybody else, so. And as I said on the note, it is a public meeting, however, it's held on private property, so the public is not allowed. We did have some turn up at Brook Street one time and they were restricted to staying on the side of the road. They were not allowed to cross the little ditch there and to go onto the property because it is, it is a construction site and it is personal property. So we don't want any kind of liability for the general public who might want to go there. Agenda item five F, Pleasant Street Bridge, anything?
Yeah, that's, the design should be approaching a hundred percent this month, but chapter eighty-five review. Boring should be this week.
This week.
We shall.
Wow. The CONCOM come tomorrow night to make sure that what they're doing is not.
We met with all the utilities. And everything's moving forward. Gas is going to be the biggest challenge.
It always is.
That's not new with Stormwater. Let's move along. That's, that's be ready to all to bid next March for actual work.
So bid in March of twenty four?
Yes. And hanging the chapter eighty-five review.
Okay. Well, the solution to the gas line is what they did on Old Somerset Avenue. If you remember, they stalled and stalled and stalled. And so the contracting company built a cradle and had the pipeline sitting on the cradle and they ripped out the bridge and replaced the bridge and before it started to snow, which was very late, the gas company finally, and the payoff was they didn't use that pipeline anyhow because they ran the pipeline down one thirty-eight and around the corner and then up the street. But anyhow, they
The temporary bridges were proposed for the gas, but it's, the temporary bridge will be in a way, so it's going to be somewhere.
Yep. Okay. Forest Hills. Would you like to address that, Mr. Woods, the status of Forest Hills?
Forest Hills has been denied a special permit.
And stop laughing, you own person. And so the appeal period is, have they gone to the appeal?
Terry would not.
Mrs. Easterday?
So, so far, an appeal has not been received yet, but we are anticipating one.
How many days in total did they have?
Twenty days and the appeal expires on March twenty second.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So the applicant, the day after the, that I brought in, checked to satisfy the additional fifty-three G monies for conservation. So they're continuing with the review, the base continuing with the review. We have not received a withdrawal. So there, and I received a call, a confused call from Michelle over at Conservation.
Did she say anything about what it was she was trying to send me that I can't open?
Tried to send me something too that I can't open, so. I don't know.
Well, I asked her to put it in Word or in PDF because I said it won't open, so forget it, we'll share it.
I just wanted to let you know, so the base continuing with the review. They submitted another review letter to us and D I T R S has requested a continuance, so.
A continuance with you? Okay. Anything else on Forest Hills?
You need to buy a pent opener.
I can't open them. I can't, this is getting worse. No pun intended. Okay, you know some Forest Hills. I'll move on to five H, Main Street Reconstruction. Mr. Ferry, you are busy today.
Moving along, Water District's with three months in it, ahead of schedule. Well, from polls, we delivered today, it should be so on poles, weather permitting. That, once we get started, it dated about sixty-five day jar there of the polls.
But is the Water District, the CLM practice, doing the connections now?
Yeah, I think so, yes. I believe they just have to cross the three coves. That's the biggest challenge right now. So they're prepping for that.
Last time we had an update, I should say the January update. You're waiting for mass DOT. Are they waiting for good weather? Are they going to allow this or is this going to be, we're going to dance around this for a while?
One thirty-eight, they already crossed it.
Oh, they did cross it?
They'll need for a response to it, I believe.
Who's waiting for a response? OT?
I don't know, they already crossed it.
Oh, okay, because those minutes said we were waiting and it sounded like, okay, very good. Oh, okay. Agenda item five A, Agent Reports. Anything on Hunter's Hill? The last thing we had that I can see is, we think it's been sold.
Hunter's Hill? Yeah.
Yeah, Longville Homes, then they filed planning board, didn't they?
They're coming to us tonight, I think.
Okay, so it's, it's going to the planning board. Okay.
But they've got permission to start clearing trees, so.
And they can build one more house on the existing subject system. They've asked if they can build a model home. But there's, they need some clarification from Planning Board before they'll be allowed to do that.
Is that home going to be somewhere near wherever the last one was that we saw?
Yeah, this is in the northeast corner.
Okay.
Where you go into the woodline.
Okay, yes, okay. All right. Agenda item five B, five oh eight Customs Conservation Commission Update. Do you have anything on that, Caledonian?
No, no, the last station meeting, we had the same update. He was still looking for something to do to work.
Oh, I think these minutes said something about some plans to be drawn and whatever. Okay. Um, yes.
Yeah. The planning board reached out to the applicant and he responded.
I didn't know he responded.
Responded the day later, the day after he was emailed by the planning board. He's engaged as an engineer and he's working on producing a plan.
Okay, well, he hasn't gotten in touch with Congress.
Well, the engineer probably doesn't produce the plan.
So in January, it says.
No, but I usually ask for an update and to provide an update every month.
Okay, this is January, so I don't know what the February says, but January said the applicant is retaining an engineer to prepare a mass DOT curb cut permit, planning board site plan and Conservation Commission Notice of Intent. So that was January, so. So I guess the stuff is in the works.
And as of March eighth, he notified the planning board in writing that he has engaged outback engineering.
Okay.
Yeah, I got that email.
Okay, very good. Agenda item five C, twenty-three seventy-one. Humpty Street, anything DEP on this one?
We sent the letter to the Charlie's.
Gas is
Okay.
They'll reply some.
Okay, all right. And I think I think Mike told me today it's in the works.
Let me follow up with the, or sorry, follow up with Caroline.
Okay. I think Mike told me today when we were going through a list of things that that one is in the works because we were talking about some updates I was going to do for this meeting today and I talked about, that's why he gave me this proposal thing. All right. Okay. Moving forward, any public input? Are you enjoying yourself, sir?
Yes, yeah, learning. Yes, I am, learning immensely.
Yes.
Um, Stone Gate Landing, phase B, everybody should have gotten the binder, all the different boards. Um, they filed with the landing, their zoning board, right, cuz this is a forty B, Stone Gate Landing.
Correct.
And so, they're, they're looking for comments from different boards, so, uh, I'm going to send the letter out. Because this is two thousand and four when they did this, the stormwater regulations, the state's stormwater regulations have changed a couple times since then. And so. It's forty B, so therefore, you know, I don't know what's been waived for eggs, and I gotta get into that a little bit, whether they've asked to waive the stormwater bylaw and such. They did, because this is two thousand and four, and by law, it didn't affect until two thousand and eight, so we may have to get into that a little bit. But even still, they need to meet the updated state regulations, just like conservation regularly at the state level may have changed, so.
Everybody's on what meeting?
Next week.
This, this is a major modification, I presume?
Correct.
So the board will be looking for input from all the other town departments. So I would encourage anyone who has any comments to join the meetings, or send the zoning board something in writing.
Correct.
Yeah, and we'll, um, like we did for Strawberry Fields, if it's a forty B, that Mr. Cussin will tell us, we don't have to deal with you, but. Uh, since the zoning board requests us to put our comments in writing, like we did Strawberry Fields. We'll be talking about this at a future stormwater meeting.
And, and whether or not they need a stormwater permit from this committee, I still think we should have input into the process.
Um, just for information, what's the name of the company that's building, uh. Going to build us our, cuz we had a few names when we were trying to trace taxes.
Ferry, do you know?
Where are they built?
Uh. Yeah, it's the same one, Nancy, so it's Able.
No, alright, so they started out as Able Realty, and then we found out they didn't get the certificate for Able something or other. And then the tax issue came up, and we had to track that down and finally get the taxes paid, so they're filed again. So, um, I think it was attorney, uh. McGregor who said something about they are going to have to get that form, and there's gonna have to be sign-off by the town. In order to get that particular form, and I think it's got something to do with the name. New name of the company, it won't be Able Realty, it'll be Able something.
Able Landing LLC.
That's it.
Care of Champion Builders LLC, they're out of Kingston.
Oh.
Kingston, Mass?
Oh, yes, sorry, I put it apart, but.
One more address to the list.
And this was, it, it, that in the packet is a letter from Mass Housing approving the, uh. Of, to conveyance, I guess, you know.
Okay, so, um. So they're keeping the name Stone Gate Landing?
Uh, we don't know.
I believe they're coming to us tonight.
Be, but they signed up, but.
Okay, so, um. Uh, Mrs. Marier, for under active project updates, uh, next month, we will add, um. Stone Gate Landing, if it's got a new name, we'll note that, but it'll be a reminder that. We need to talk about whatever goes on between this meeting and our next meeting. Any other public input from anybody? Uh, correspondence, I guess this email that I just mentioned already under, uh. The, the Weston and Sampson thing, that's the only thing I have, do we have anything else that anyone knows of, came in? Okay, the correspondent, approval of the minutes, uh, we have the January eighteen minutes, and as I said, I know they went out, uh, yesterday. And you may not have had a chance, uh, but is anyone willing to make a motion to approve these minutes? If not, we'll put them off till next month.
I, I did read them, while we were between, I'll move that we approved the meeting minutes for January eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, right, if, if by any chance you haven't read them, and you do read them, and you find something that doesn't sound right, just let me know. Because we can always amend the minutes, if there's a, something, or if something should have been in there that wasn't. Um, just let me know, uh, Mrs. Caldonia, you had a question about September minutes?
And you said there were missing pages.
The minutes as approved were correct, the minutes that got put in the book had pages, not only that, that set. But I was looking at the minutes to be able to write the stormwater report, I will be sending that out to you, um.
Annual report.
For the town report. And in the course of doing that, I marked some pages, uh, with stickies, and I told, um, Mr. Pilling. When they went through the copier, it was almost the same page each time.
So they were meant to double side, and told when they got scanned, there's only the front page, it was only one, three, and five.
Yeah, so, the minutes, the minutes that we have, were okay, it's what was in the book. Didn't, but anyhow, um, and I did go through all the minutes for the entire year. And, and put the stickies on the ones that had something missing, so, um, is there anything else before we adjourn? Uh, so, uh, Mrs. Marier, February fifteenth minutes will be on for approval, as will these, if we have them done in time. Uh, for the next meeting, um, does anyone have any questions about anything, including, we got a site visit tomorrow? Um, anything about that, um. Uh, anything about any agenda items that you know of that, like, we're gonna add Stone Gate, since it's back again? Um, in the meantime, if you think of anything, let Mrs. Marier know that we should add to this stormwater agenda, whatever it is. Because she'll collect that data, and I will check with her, and if I get any others, I will send her an email and say. Uh, please add this to the list of things that we need to look at and talk about, so. I'm looking at ten minutes of three, this is gonna be a record.
I'll make a motion or adjourn.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, 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 and it would have been quicker, Nick, if you hadn't held us up.